Yeah, those important rules, you have to hold these guys down from being a loop, especially Hassan's big mouth over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's your job, so hopefully keep it that respectful and nonviolent.
Okay, this is not.
Even if I met him, he would answer the phone.
Thank you. And then you're gonna be calling the name though?
Yeah, when you call it out here.
Okay. Cody? Hmm, you're gonna not get to that someone. Do you just want to make, and then would hold the comments come?
Do you have issues with the internet or no? Do you have issues with the internet? Cause mine is acting up.
Do you need an agenda?
I mean, I just wanna open it here.
Is it saying that you're connected to the internet, saying no connection?
I mean, I'm almost there, but the agenda thing would not open when I click on it.
He burned. John. You got levels? Check, 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 check.
I have to connect from this.
I'm that brother.
When are you gonna be sure? I mean, right after the whole college.
Because right after his pledge allegiance. So let me just read this right before I go causing, he's not here, this is the reason.
Are you gonna come up or no?
He's not.
No. Uh, give one to each, that's from Bill Maher.
No, it's not a comment, it's not, he's not speaking on anything, he's just saying he could make some decisions.
Before that, if you can give me an agenda, this wouldn't open.
It won? We got one more chance?
There's like three of them.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Yes.
Maybe announce in the hallway too.
Chip.
Maybe announce in the hallway too, so they're not.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make sure.
Yes.
Mayor, uh, the chief's gonna announce the quorum, uh, like we did last time.
Sound system will give.
Last time was issue. Rana, yep, is hallway taking out?
She wants to give her receipt for you, Chip.
She's giving her receipt for you. Nope.
Nah, 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 nah.
Alright, the hallway's where, I haven't seen anything in here, but.
Are we expecting anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, who can start?
No? I'm probably gonna be getting like an hour ahead of the board. Okay, well.
Gentlemen, quiet down a little bit.
Who might get halfway through it?
They're starting, quiet down in the hallway.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone, thanks for coming. I call this a special city council meeting to order, today is May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and it's four ten P M. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Um, before I do, I'm gonna just read a quick email that Khalil sent, why he's not here, he says, good evening, everyone, I respectfully submit this statement to inform the mayor, council, and everyone that I cannot attend the special council meeting scheduled for four P M. Due to the limited notice and insufficient time coupled with prior obligations related to my interstate job, I'm regrettably unavailable to participate, I wish it had been scheduled for seven P M, like regular. City council meetings, then I would have been able to attend, I appreciate your understanding and reaffirm my continued commitment to serving residents of Hamtramck, with that said, Khalil, councilman Vai is not here, uh, councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Sifman is not here, councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mister Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to God, for one nation, and for the love, excuse the language, whatever it is you're talking about. Thank you. Alright, do we have any community announcements today?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, we don't have, um, many items to discuss today, but, uh, looks like there's no proclamations or recognitions as well, right? Um, any additions or additions to the agenda? Alright, so, we will start, uh, with the interesting part, which is the public comment. But before that, I would like to mention that, uh, everybody should follow the rules, when you speak, look at the mayor, no interruption, no personal abusive language or, um, personal attacks. Please be civil and, uh, respect each other, no interruptions. Um, and if you'd like an extra minute, you can ask the mayor for that. We're gonna start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start with reading off emails. First one is from Hamtramck Command Officers and Hamtramck Police Officer Association of Michigan. Sadly, over the past week, we as a union have been made aware of several allegations that have affected not only the police department, but the city of Hamtramck as well. After speaking with the ranking officers' union and the patrol union, and the majority were in favor of speaking on this issue. First, we would like to show support for our current city manager, Maxwell Garberino. Since his return, city manager Garberino has expressed his dedication to not only the police department, but to the city as a whole. His statements have been proven to not only be words, but he has taken appropriate action to better the police department, which in turn better serves the city of Hamtramck. During his tenure as city manager, Garberino has strengthened the police department contracts, which in turn has assisted in being able to hire more qualified individuals, retain our current membership, and raise morale in the, in the department. City manager Garberino has been a big reason that the union, unions and city have a good working relationship, we feel that in our duty to our voice, to voice our support for city manager Garberino during this time. Secondly, we would like to speak in our, in favor of Chief Jamil Al Tahir. The police unions are just as surprised as the rest of the Hamtramck community of the recent allegations. Chief Al Tahir has been a great, has made great strides to mend the relationship between the residents in Hamtramck and the police department. Between the community outreach programs that have been initiated and the transparency that has been shown, just like city manager Garberino, he has raised morale within our department. With the above statements being made, the union would ask everyone to reserve their personal opinion until the completion of the investigation. The union asks the community to understand just because someone in the law enforcement field is put on leave, does not mean they are guilty of wrongdoing. Being placed on leave in the law enforcement field is a common practice and by police and by public policy to protect the interests of the residents within the city. The union believes it is the duty of the city manager who is in charge of overseeing the chief's position to take these actions, no different than how the chief would be expected to handle an allegation within the police department. As a union, we would ask for a fair and impartial investigation, during the investigation, the union is certain, the city of Hamtramck will continue to have top-notch police services, which the residents deserve. If and when Chief Al Tahir is cleared, we as a union look forward to continuing to work under his leadership sincerely C O A M and H P O A. Next one is from Lynn Blazi, local resident, hello, mayor and council, this is absolutely ridiculous, four of you are under investigation for election fraud. Two are running for reelection even though you don't actually live there, here, and in the process have shown that you're committing tax fraud by claiming homestead somewhere that you don't actually live consistently. And now your police chief is under investigation for some pretty serious stuff, I've seen the allegations. Instead of doing the right thing and playing by the rules, you all consistently ignore them and make up new rules to your own advantage. I didn't want to believe Amanda when she said that it was the Wild West during her time in office, and truly believed I could make a difference. With all that's going on, I'm incredibly grateful for my choice not to run this time around. Your choice to lash out at folks whose job is to protect our elections and ensure our city runs smoothly is ridiculous, childish, and further evidence that none of you are fit for office or public service. Your childish temper tantrums make us look like we're being run by a bunch of toddlers, do better and be better. I commend both Max and Rana for doing the right thing and working to put an end to this dog and pony show. And because you guys love to revert back to this argument, these allegations have nothing to do with ethnicity or religion and everything to do with the law, character, and ethics. Your games affect the lives of those who actually live here, and none of you are doing a good job of being ambassadors for our city, or showing the world how wonderful it really is to be a part of this community. Stop playing games, thank you, Lynn Blazi. This is from Carrie Beth Leslie, also a, uh, Hamtramck resident, I have a job, so I can't be there, please read my comma. As a person who has had multiple source, source confirmed to me that the FBI is involved, I stand behind Max's decision to suspend both involved officers while the FBI sorts out the drama. The last thing any of you need, since most of you are under investigation for one reason or another, is to look like you are getting in the way of the FBI. The prudent action is the one that Max took, no one has been fired, but everyone needs to be kept a distance from the city activities while the investigation is going on. Suspension with pay is a proper action, it serves you well politically to not make sides while this is sorted out. I have seen the allegations as sent to me anonymously from one of the involved parties, and if there is any splinter of truth to any of them, you do not want to get involved, it is not about a demotion. Many of you want to support someone who has made big changes and has represented Yemenis well, and hopefully at the end of this, you will be proud to welcome the chief back to active duty. However, if the chief has committed a crime, you will look foolish for not taking a step back and letting the law enforcement sort this out. Signed Larry Best, Larry Beth, I'm sorry, Carrie Beth Leslie, Ph D. This is from Jeff, Miriam Jethlin, to Hamtramck city mayor and police, Chief Jamil Al Tahir is an honorable man, he is a great father in person. I am saddened by these false allegations against him and me, he informed me some time ago not to trust police officer David Adamechek or enter a car. When I asked why, he stated that I don't know if he's serious or joking, but he wanted to put drugs in a car and arrest you as a way for me to get custody. From then on, I never spoke to police officer David Adamechek, but Jamil did tell me that he was not a good guy, and that he and the city manager are doing shady things and to stay away from them or anyone associating with them. I'm not going to speak about my personal business, but I want to clear that Jamil never physically abused me, and we have a very respectful relationship. I have argued with him in the past as other couples, as any other couples, thank you for listening to me. There, also, there was a report taken in ship, and I voluntarily left to see my son because I wasn't feeling good, thank you, mayor and police, Miriam Ahmani. That's all for emails, I'll start with public. Thank you, yes.
There are some people who said they sent emails, is that, is that what we have? Just. I received that some people not, not being able to come physically, but they sent emails.
Hmm. I'll check one more time, if you're with me.
Yeah.
I did get an email, but it was too, it wasn't a public comment, so I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
What's the, what's the name of the person?
Was it a female?
Rafat?
No.
Somebody texted, says Rafat and another one Louis or something, and.
Today?
Yeah.
And they wrote public comma?
Well, mayor, she, she can look for him if you wanna move on to the regular comments.
Yeah, Rafat and Louis, two people who sent emails.
I'm pretty good with that kind of stuff, mayor.
Okay, if you don't find that, I don't know, uh, where did they send it?
And if you, if, if you want to do your, if you wanna text them, let them send them to me and see if I got them in time, I'll, I'd be more than happy to assist, but I don't see anything in my emails.
Okay, go ahead and.
Okay, um, Norbert Rebels? Sir, three minutes?
Hello, everyone. Um, well, I didn't know I was gonna go first. How long do we get?
Three minutes, sir.
I've been, I'm sixty years old and I've been through a lot, and, uh, lost everything, and, uh, had a big problem with my roof, um, no one would help me. The chief noticed that, he said, come on, let's go get some coffee, we wouldn't go get coffee, I come back home, come back home, there's two big trucks in front of my house, and I'm like, what's going on? He said, we're gonna redo your roof. You know, my own family, two of them, who are pretty, pretty rich, wouldn't help their dad. This guy used to come and check on me once a week, just to see how I'm doing. And I go inside, come back outside, these guys are tearing off my roof, and I'm like, what are they doing? And he said, uh, you're gonna, you're about to get a brand-new roof. I was shocked, I started crying, sixty years old, I'm a football coach, and I'm, I'm out there crying. I grabbed him, and I kissed him on his forehead, he pushed me back. I say, no, don't ever push me back, man, when I grab you, I hold you, give you a kiss on the forehead, you take it, he looked me in my eyes, he said, okay, seriously. And I'm gonna start crying, so I'm, I'm gonna sit down.
Thank you, sir. Yekyamawari?
Assalamualaikum. I'm here in support of Chief, uh, Jamil Al Tahir. I wanna, I don't know what it is, I mean, this accusation has a one effect on our community, our young people, first and second and third and fourth generation, Yemeni-American. The young people who really, we trying to get their, their education, and we are in the good way. And now this gonna affect in our, not only on the, uh, career of, uh, Chief Jamal Al Tahir, but is gonna be affecting in our community. All this media here, and I hope they will be balanced and they be fair to our community who try to, our community trying to be, emerge with this, uh, whole general community in the U S, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Justin Petrosik? Justin P.
Justin what?
Petrosik?
Justin Pedostic?
He's probably pronouncing it better than I do.
Is there a Justin Pedostic?
No? Oh, okay.
Petrosik? Yeah, complete, public comment. He's on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, yep, a little, a little, that's why we try and call.
Three minutes.
Yeah.
Thanks, Justin.
Sure. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Ooh, I'm here in support of, uh, our city manager. I'm not a, I'm not a well man. Uh, I used to be much more well than this, long-time Hamtramckan, and, uh, gone to an accident a couple years back, and it took me a while to get back to this city, my home, and, uh, still recovering, um, pretty darn disabled, I don't know Max from anybody. Uh, he's not a friend of mine, um, not a neighbor, but when I got back here, I needed a lot of help with some systemic stuff. Where I first found myself in temporary housing, there was a municipal parking lot that didn't have handicap spaces, and I just reached out to him and it was fixed like the next day. When I got back into my house, my old flat, uh, the streetlight was broken, and with my brain injury, it was like stabbing into my eyes and stuff, and he fixed that the next day. And I don't know, I have problems with my alley, and I, trash doesn't get picked up, but every time I reach out to him, he coordinates and it gets done. And it's a longer list than that, you'll have to forgive me, um. I just, you know, these may sound like small problems, like as somebody who's like trying to get back on their feet and like in their home, like, it's a very significant solutions for me, and, um, I don't know what this is all about, I really don't, um, but gosh, it'd be a shame, uh, to not have this person that seems to care, and be able to reach out to them, and, uh, that makes me kinda scared for myself, so, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lukman Sala, Hamtram, Hamtramck resident?
Yes. Assalamualaikum. Yeah, assalamualaikum. Lukman Sala, living in Hamtramck with almost, uh, twenty-seven years, I love Hamtramck, and, uh, I love Hamtramck to be clear, healthy, beautiful, and, um, we know, we're all here to, um, serve the city, even elected officials, overappointed, um, administrators. We should respect the law, I'm not here to support anyone against anyone, but we should support the law. Mistakes happens, and investigators are working on it, so I advise you all to read the investigations and read it again and again, and listen to the, uh, the city attorney before you make any decisions. The city budgets is in bad shape, we will not accept anything to make it worse, so please, read it, make the right decision, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Matt Kiziali?
Matt Kiziali.
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 Matt Kiziali? Is there a Matt?
Uh, mayor, council, how you guys doing today? Um, I just am here, uh, to support Max, uh, because at the end of the day, in my opinion, you know, coming to watch you guys, the last couple city council meetings. Uh, because at the end of the day, in my opinion, you know, coming to watch you guys, the last couple of city council meetings and stuff. These meetings would not run without Max. The city would not run without Max. And while you may disagree with him politically or administratively, at the end of the day, you guys are not the ones doing the work. He is. And who are you going to find to do the job besides him? Nobody else wants to do that job. Nobody else really wants to run for council or mayor. So why would you guys try to replace him last minute on a Friday before Memorial Day? You know, I, we all have better things to be doing than sitting here doing this. And because of politics, because of your guys' corruption, you wanna get rid of him for just trying to do his job. And you know, at the end of the day, he does do a pretty good job. We, I might disagree with some of the things that he wants to do, but at the end of the day, you guys can barely even make a motion without the clerk and the city manager coming in here and helping you guys out. You would not be able to even make a motion. You wouldn't be able to legally have this meeting without them. And I just want you guys to remember that. Thank you.
Me- uh, Megan Featherstone, also Hamtramck resident? Megan Featherstone?
Megan Featherstone?
Good afternoon. My name is Megan. I've lived in Hamtramck for over a decade. I would like to say the same of you, but I think we all know that several of you don't. Or under investigation for not, which is a waste of all of our tax dollars. Every time I come in here, I have to talk about something that you have done to waste our tax dollars. Okay? I may not agree with Max politically, just like my friend, but he's doing his job. I'm here in support of Max and our city clerk for doing their job. Every time I hear about this council, it's a waste of our money. A waste, shameful. I remember Councilman Hassan, didn't you run on getting rid of the income tax in Hamtramck? Okay, I'm addressing the mayor. What's up? I'm pretty sure Councilman Hassan ran on getting rid of our income tax like five years ago. What's up with that? I've come here, I don't know how many times, see Councilman Musa taking a nap. What's up with that? I'm not even sure if you, Mayor, even live here. Definitely, definitely love people who don't. Definitely looking out for none of us who live here, who pay our taxes and who deserve better than this foolishness. All of these people in here, because you wanna use your time and our money to try and further your political career. Which for some of y'all, haven't even, you, you haven't even gotten out of this room. Y'all are shameful. We deserve better. There are people in this city who have needs. Thank you. None of them are being met by this city. And you know that. You know that. And that's why Councilman Hassan is looking at me smirking, cuz he knows that. Shameful, shameful behavior. We all deserve better.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott Aronson?
Harrington or Harrington?
Aronson.
Scott Aronson?
Hello, uh, my name is Scott Aronson. I'm the owner of the Hamtramck Hostel. Uh, this is the first time, I've been a city, uh, business owner for about seven years. This is the first time, I'm not a political person, this is the first time I've ever been at one of these meetings. Um, and I just felt it was important that I come to support, to support, uh, Max. You know, I don't have a lot of issues, uh, with our business, with the hostel, it's on homes. But whenever I do and I send a message, you know, he's the guy that, that cares. And, uh, I think it's very hard to find somebody like that. And when you have somebody like that, you know, it's, you should be doing everything that you can to keep him. And, uh, so I just, you know, urge you, if that's something that you're not planning on doing, I urge you to strongly, strongly reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abraham Aljheim? Abraham, was it?
Abraham Aljheim.
What?
Abraham Aljheim.
Abraham Aljheim.
Good evening, Council Mayor, Manager, City Attorney, Clerk, and Deputy Chief. First of all, David Adamcheck, the investigator. In January, he said to me and the chief, he wants to rent a car, put drugs in it. And have the chief's wife drive it. He'll take her to jail. The chief said, no way. This is my child's mom. I would never do that to her. Well, she's giving you a hard time. She's mental. She's on drugs. He said, doesn't matter. You're not doing that to her. Two weeks after that, he asked me to be a CI. Confidential informant for the Hamtramck Police Department. And I would work with the FBI, DAA, State Police. And Max would pay me. That's exactly what he said. The city will pay you, will make you ID, will do this and will do that. I said, no, thank you. Is that why he asked for my ID in my email? A month before that, he said, yes, I'm working on it. I said, I'm not doing that to my community. I've been here thirty-five years and activist and a political, and then, uh, and, and a political activist and a community activist for twenty-six years. You're gonna pay me a thousand dollars after each case. For what? You do your job. You're hired for that, not me. And then to go back during, when people were running, Max was putting pressure on Chief Jamil Tahir not to support any candidate. Cuz he preferred another candidate. Of course, anybody, the president, the, the chief lives here. He can pick whoever he wants. And now yesterday, I don't have Facebook anymore, by the way. Max posted that the Monroe County Prosecutor got the case for you guys already, for the voter fraud. Who's pushing it? I would like an extra minute, Mr. Mayor. And who's pushing it and why now? The residency, I've been pushing it for seven months. But why the residency just came up now, the voter fraud came now, and the, the chief's situation came now. And there was a guy that bought a car from New York. Came here, we were right outside City Hall. He said, Abraham, I want you to come with me to Dearborn to pick up my car. I said, I'm not going to Dearborn. And David pops up with the police car. I said, David, if you're going to pick up the car, I'm going with you cuz I feel safe when I'm, when I'm next to a police officer as big as David. He's also investigated for the city. And he was fired in two thousand and three. We would love to find out why he was fired. So we went, got the car. My son drove it to New York. Yes, my son drove the car to New York. And it wasn't stolen. The guy had a title. The title was signed. So I don't know what the, what is all this about? You know, they mentioned something that happened in New York. Well, Max wants to bring a company, outside company to investigate. No, Max. We want the State Police and FBI to investigate. Not a, not a separate company, not an investigation company, private company. Cuz we know David has a company. Max has an investigation company. And the third company might be their friend, might do them a favor. We want the State Police and the FBI to investigate every little thing that goes on in Hamtramck. Thank you.
Folks, there's no clapping in here. Audience will remain silent.
Angela Haban?
Angela Haban?
Haban.
Haban.
Can you check the email?
Sorry, I just looked through all of my emails today.
Hi, um, Angela Haven. I live on Flinger Street, longtime resident. Um, I'm just here to speak on behalf of process. It seems like there's a lot of allegations against the chief and the detective. And I think the right thing to do is what Max has done and start an investigation and have people on paid leave. No one's been fired. It's a paid leave while we understand what's going on and what's the best thing for the city. I don't want anyone to lose their jobs because of a power struggle or because of misunderstandings. I, I think the right thing to do at this point is exactly what Max has done in representing the needs of the city and the best interest of the people who live here and all of you. Um, I, I, it's, it's embarrassing to be in the news as a city for, for these reasons all the time. Um, there's a process to be followed when it comes to investigations for wrongdoing in every single line of business. In my job, if I do something wrong, I'll be put on leave and not paid while it's investigated, right? Um, so I think the right thing to do would be to allow the investigation to go through, keep Max in his job, see what the investigation says, and then make the decisions on what to do from there. That's in the best interest of the city. It saves the taxpayers a bunch of embarrassment and you all the amount of time and money and is really the only fair thing to do at this point. Um, so please just keep everyone in their jobs until what's, what's done is done and, and the right thing to do is determined. Thanks.
Thank you. Hassan, Dearborn resident?
Good afternoon, everybody. Hassan Ayoun. First of all, Mr. Mayor, you got a Freedom of Information the other day regarding Max. Max is not allowed to work for the city of Hamtramck. Number one, it's right here, black and white. You read it, Mr. Mayor. The attorney read it. The attorney sent it to me. The clerk sent it to me. His contract that he has right now is void. I'll tell you why. This was supposed to be disclosed to the public. The mayor could not get it and nobody could get it. Until I sent the Freedom of Information with a retention letter. And I demanded, if I don't get it, I'm gonna litigate. What happened is, he hid this from the public. So we're gonna sit here and blame this individual because him and David are investigating people, false allegations for a chief of police for twenty-five years. From New York City, they came to dedicate his life here to change Hamtramck. There was not a punch in and a punch out in the beginning. Guy smoking cigarettes upstairs. And he bought, what's it called? A guy with overtime, stealing overtime. You guys forgot about that. And this guy's gonna come here like a coward, sit in here with this right here, comes, works over here, lies to you, does not disclose this. And what's the, what's the city attorney gonna say? Oh, oh, he has another contract? No, this contract right here is the, the original contract he signed. He's not allowed to work in the city. He signed a contract, it's right here, his signature. His signature's right here. His signature's right here. I like the extra minute, please. His signature's right here, Mr. Mayor. He signed it. He agreed not to work for the city. He agreed that if you, that you guys, he lied to you. Remember that. Lies after lies. It's okay for Max to lie. But if, if you wanna sit there and investigate a chief of police that's dedicated for twenty-five years, that was a captain taking care of over a hundred officers. A small city over here, he wants to come steal, you're, you're not, sit there talking about his wife, his kid. This is all David. And David, Max suspended David to make it look, oh, that what's it called? Nobody's talking about David. They're all bashing the chief of police. And that's the problem. You guys have to understand, there's one, two, three, four, five. You make a vote today, get this guy out of here because his contract is expired, void. If the attorney's gonna tell you, I know otherwise, I'm filing a grievance today against the attorney. If you guys sit there and tell me that the attorney told you that this is not void, it's void automatically. It's a shame that we're gonna sit here and bash the chief of police. Guys, wake up. The clerk does her job and Max is sitting here slacking off, worried about Mohammed, worried about this guy, worried about that guy. But he's not worried about himself for lying. You cannot work here. It's very simple. If we're gonna give Max a slap on the wrist, we might as well give everybody a slap on the wrist, guys. Think about it. Vote on it. Get this guy out of here.
Thank you. Sam Alasari?
Mr. Mayor, if I may have a second? Just a point of clarity. That document has been publicly available.
No, it wasn't publicly available.
A simple search, Google search would have provided it. Mr. Ayoun didn't even have to FOIA it, but apparently he didn't find it, uh, Googling. Uh, further, um, Mr. Ayoun is not an attorney. He relies on ChatGPT and that's contract. Um, I'm frankly kinda disturbed about the slander and things he just misrepresents constantly to this council, but that's not true, period.
Sam, three minutes?
Mr. Mayor, city councils, as long as you're sitting in the chairs, be clear and clean. And legally sitting in the chairs, we have a lot of respect for you. Doesn't matter what they say, it doesn't matter what they act like, okay? Master Tahir, actually, he's working in the city and all of us actually know, he did a lot of improvement actually to the, uh, to the police department. And we stand with him and we support him. The same thing, we not against anyone. It's only we need the city to run the way they should be run, to be clear, clear, and also to be, work, I mean, to do the best for the city, not to use the tax dollars for hiring for something else is not benefit the cities. We do respect to everyone. We need the city. There is a lot of services we needed in the city. So we, we stand here and we support, support the mayor to make the right decision. And we will stand with him to make the city is clear and clean. Thank you so much.
Mutaher, Mutaher Fadl?
Fahar Fadl.
Mutaher Fadl.
One more time.
Mutaher Fadl.
Mutahar?
Hamtramck resident?
Good evening, Assalamualaikum. I don't know where to start, um. I am not with somebody against, against anybody, but if, um, Mister Al Tahir did any mistakes or fallation, he should, he should be held accountable according to law. And you should not target him because he succeeded and he is well-known and he's doing his job right. And I hope, and I will say this to Max, that you didn't take this action based on personal thing between you and Mister Al Tahir. And I'm not against you, Max. You are a good guy. You are, you're doing your job right. But sometimes when two city councils like have something against each other, you take one side rather than the other side, so. Stay out of the politician and do your job as a city manager. We like to have diversity on the police department and on the fire department. This is the first time we have someone from our community and the police department. And we feel he's being targeted. And if, if he's gonna, the investigation is gonna indicate that he did a fallation, I don't mind if he be, um, held accountable, um, according to law, but, um, I have a bad reputation with the police department. I, one time I came because my wife, before the mayor took office, my wife, uh, green card was lost and I came to get, um, a report. They denied me. They said, no, go just go call the immigration. They will send you another one. One time I came to ask for Khalil Al Rifaai when he was an officer inside. The guy on reception told me he's not here. I, I'm sorry. I turned around and I called Khalil and he came from inside. You know? Um, one time, one of my neighbors' car mirror got broken. His teenager kid, excuse me, he called a police officer. And the police came. He knocked on my door. He said, what happened today? I told him, I don't know. He got mad at me. He said, I'll take you to jail. Why? I don't know what happened. Even if he accused me, I still don't know. And then he went to knock about twelve neighbors to see if he seen me broke that mirror and they told him, no. He came back and told me, work it out with him or I'll take you to jail. I told him, no. It's not about a forty dollars mirror. It is about reputation. It's not about a forty dollars mirror. It is about reputation. And then when I, he gave me two tickets. When I came, he gave me a third one, even though my case was dismissed. So we wanted diversity, but we want everybody to be here according to the law. And not to be targeted because of his, you know, successful things or his race or his, uh, you know, community he came from or his background. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Petrac?
Greetings, gentlemen. Uh, I'm here today as a longtime resident of Hamtramck, a member of the city's business community and a staunch believer in what the residents of this city stand for. I'm horrified by the circus that the current administration has turned this city into. I've invested everything I have in this town and watched as outsiders have been allowed to use it for personal gain and political gain. Currently, we have a police chief imported from New York who stands accused of using his power to cover up domestic abuse incidents, adultery, abuse of power for financial gain, and misuse of department resources. We also have two, probably three council members who don't think highly enough of the city that they lead to raise their families here. And we have four council members who stand accused of undermining the very backbone of our democracy via ballot harvesting and voter fraud. None of these things can be blamed on previous administration. None of these things can be blamed on insufficient cash flow or cultural differences or any of the usual excuses that fly around this room. None of the blame for those things lie with anyone but the people sitting across from me right now. Yet here we are on a Friday evening in a meeting that wasn't really announced during the, uh, via the usual channels. While the very people who are responsible for this situation debate what to do about one person, the one person, who has acted to uphold the law in the interest of the public good. If you take action, it would be the definition of retaliation. At every opportunity, Mr. Garberino has acted thoughtfully with measured caution to protect the citizens' interests and ensure that the city operates fairly in accordance with law. Ironically, the only people who take issue with Max are the people sitting across from me and their assorted sycophants and cronies, many of whom who do not understand the law. If you decide to fire Mr. Garberino, there will certainly be a large lawsuit and likely criminal proceedings against you. As a property owner in the city, I don't wanna see the financial consequences of your failings on my tax bill as they have for past lawsuits. It is your duty as elected officials to act in the best interest of the citizens, not yourself. Therefore, you must allow the investigations to proceed without interference and allow the city manager and city clerk to remain in their positions. The citizens, as they seem to be the only people with any power in this town, who are interested in doing that. Thank you.
Bill Meyer?
Hi, Bill Meyer from, uh, Trowbridge, longtime resident. And, uh, I've attended more meetings than anybody else in Hamtramck and, um, because I love Hamtramck and I love the people who live here. Uh, I totally support the policing statement that was made earlier. I'm here to support both our beloved chief and, uh, the best city manager that I think we ever had. He's a unifier. He's concerned about every resident. I have many examples of, to prove that, but, uh, like one, for example, he wants to have his office in the front hallway of City Hall so that he can help people when they come in the door and meet people. He doesn't wanna be by himself up in the third floor in an expensive office. He's, uh, he's attended every city event. He replies immediately to every cause we have. I totally support Max and his work. I, I ask you that, um, you look for all the facts, find the whole truth before you make any decision. We need to hear from all relevant parties. We haven't heard a thing from Max or from the, uh, chief of police. Our city does not need any more lawsuits, as you well know. Uh, but Max did make some critical mistakes. He, uh, he did not consult the council or mayor before he made this decision. That was a very big mistake. And I think an investigation could have taken place, uh, without having to suspend the, uh, chief of police. Not sure about that, but, uh, our chief, uh, was highly vetted when he, uh, applied for this position. He's, he's made a major mark in this city. His, uh, accusations, accusations against him are not really proven yet. Whistleblowers, the secret whistleblower that senses information, can make a lot of money from these sort of projects. Yeah, it's, uh, this happened before in the school system and, uh, you might wanna look into things that happened with the superintendent there and, uh, there's many examples of this sort of stuff going on in this city, corruption, not among the new people, but, uh, among the old. We need to ask, we need to ask why certain people are being targeted and attacked and other people are not. You know, I recommend that, uh, Max end the suspension if possible of our chief and let the investigation go forward like others have said. Keep Max on his job for sure. The problem is not Max Garberino or Jamil Altehri. Some people are intentionally creating chaos in this city by making baseless accusations. Let's get back to working together and let the truth and justice prevail and, uh, keep everybody on their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Finesier? Hamtramck, listen, three minutes?
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Elizabeth Finesher and I'm the owner of Ferryfield LLC and Purple Pattern LLC who operate in Hamtramck. My clientele comes to visit my business in Hamtramck not only from all over Metro Detroit, but all over the country. Previous to opening my business in the city, I worked as a paralegal at a high-powered art and intellectual property right law firm in New York City. I left that job to return home to Michigan to invest my time, my money, and my talents in my home state. I am here today to remind you of the importance of law. The concept of democracy is considered to have been developed around the sixth or fifth century BCE. This is long before any of our times, so I thought it'd be useful to quote Aristotle. "Justice alone of the virtues is thought to be another's good. Because it is related to our neighbor, for it does what is advantageous to another. Now the worst man who is exercising his wickedness, both towards himself and towards his friends, and the best man is not that who exercises his virtue towards himself, but he who exercises it towards another. For this is a difficult task. Justice in this sense is not part of virtue, but virtue entire. Nor is the contrary in justice, a part of vice, but vice entire. What the difference is between virtue and justice in this sense is plain from what we have said. They are the same, but their essence is not the same. What, as a relation to one's neighbor is just, is as a certain kind of state without qualification, virtue. I encourage you to understand that the rule of law in this country exists to create justice for all. That is what will be sought by the people of Hamtramck so that neighbors and businesses can operate and flourish under fair law." Thank you.
Jeremy D., Hamtramck? Jeremy D.?
Jeremy D.? A Jeremy D.
Hi, I'm a longtime resident and I'm just here to say that, you know, there's some serious allegations made against the chief of police. And, uh, it seems to me that the appropriate response to allegations like that leave of absence. The chief himself posted on Facebook today that he, we should let the, let the investigations go forward, get to the bottom of them, and I agree with him. Let the man clear his name. If there are baseless allegations, if there's something there, then we find that out too. I think placing someone with allegations that's serious levied against them on administrative leave seems appropriate. What I don't find appropriate is calling an emergency meeting to oust the people who put the man on leave. That seems like an appropriate response when there are allegations like this. Put him on leave, do an investigation, find out. If you're kicking people out or attempting to for whistleblowing, that doesn't, it's got a bad look to it, I think. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Melissa Gilchrist?
Melissa?
Hi, my name is Melissa Gilchrist. I am a resident of Hamtramck. I have lived here, owned property here, voted, paid property income taxes here for twenty-six years. And this is unprecedented in my experience. Um, I did not even know this meeting was happening until I happened to be at City Hall today for another matter. Um, and basically all I wanna say is that I hope the city council will follow the-
On behalf of one person, and we have deposed Max and we deposed a lot of people in the city. Be careful, follow your attorney's advice, get good legal counsel, don't find me without a good reason, because you get sued, okay? We don't wanna see a city sued. City, last season these are lose money due to lawsuits, okay? So be very, very careful, because I, I've encountered a lot of people at the Attorney General's office. I met with Tom Leonard, who is now made for the Republican Attorney General. I went to his house and do it. I talked to Dan Nestle before she was elected. Dan Nestle says, I'll clean up and travel. Don't worry about me. She never did. So with that, I wish to say Godspeed.
Thank you. Mo Mohammed?
Mo Mohammed? Mo Mohammed?
Salaam alaikum. Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, I'll say David took my car for nine day, nineteen days. He got me to lose my job. He got me to stay at home, lost my aid. I went through hell through those nineteen days. He took, he took it. He left this, this day, I, I think. And, uh, when he came back, I tried to contact him. He kept giving me days after days after days after days. He said that my car was stolen and I showed him proof that I got it from the auction and he wouldn't believe it until we had to reach, reach out to the chief police and he put in a word for us and after that, he barely gave me my car back. And since then, he's been targeting me and my friends and every time, like, uh, when I drive through the city, I don't feel safe, because no one, he's a police officer in Hamtramck. I feel like I'm gonna get pulled over every, every time I drive around Hamtramck, so I barely stay in the city. I don't, I don't feel comfortable in the city because of him. I don't. That's it.
Thank you. Khalid Almasari? Khalid Almasari?
Yes, ma'am. Salaam alaikum, Mr. Mayor. City council, everyone here? Good de, evening, good afternoon. I am a longtime resident of the city of Hamtramck for almost thirty years, thirty-five years. I ain't never seen it this bad. It's just very depressing to hear this negative news every other day from the city of Hamtramck. And I just hope and wish that we do find a way or a path to get out of this lumbow that we are in. Now, you are elected to these positions to work for the city, to improve the city. Not to blame each other and go against each other. That is not what you were waiting for. I know both gentlemen. I know Max and I know, uh, the chief for a long time. And they both are doing an exceptional job, I can say. Having said that, no one is above the law. Investigations ongoing. I really think we should wait for the investigations to be completed so we can make an informed decision. The city suffered a lot from lawsuits. We need another one, not from the chief or from Max. So I'm here to ask you to wait for the investigation to be completed and make an informed decision. And hoping and praying that's, that will be the end of this drama in the city. It's always good to hear good news. We had good news for the few, uh, a couple, for the couple of years passed. But now, all we hear is negative. And, and, and believe me, when I talk to my friends and colleagues from outside the city, they, 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 they say, we live in a third world country. We're not in America anymore. We need changes. Thank you very much. Salaam alaikum.
Thank you, doctor.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, for some reason, our internet, like, I don't know if you're still having trouble with your computer?
I mean, it's, it's open now.
Yeah, so you might buy, just recycle things. I'm connected to a hardware that I'm-
We're like, what's that noise? There's a beeper right in front of us, huh?
Okay, we're, we're working again. Oh my god, moving off with my head. Okay, Khalid is spoken. Saifal Islam?
Saifal Islam?
Hello, how are you guys doing? Um, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say a couple things about, uh, the situation, the whole thing going on. We're just having a meeting one after another, emergency meeting coming up, and that's kind of out of normal, you know, schedule. And, uh, I wanted to see if you could, you know, take your time and get this thing processed. And I think it's time for you to speak up, you know, and get this thing a little moving. Because I've been hearing a lot of, you know, thinking about Max is gonna get out of here and stuff like that. Which, you know, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure if you replace somebody, you'll get another guy, but, you know, it's gonna take time. Like I said before in my last speech last week, this is a good resource, good man, you know? Uh, he's been there for a while and I'm here to support him. And, you know, I, I think right now is the time that we should just, you should just not take anybody's side, which is, I know that you're taking. I know you're gonna be leaving soon and you wanna be silent and try to not create no enemy. But I think right now is the time for you to stand up and say enough is enough, then, you know, put this to an end. Because, what, about three weeks now? Yeah, about three months, I've been hearing every meeting, oh, we're gonna have a meeting about Max. Why is that every week have to be like this? This guy going through, I don't know what, probably he's going through depression and stuff like that, you know? But this, this is, this is outrageous, man. You know, if you could stand up and, you know, stop being silenced and speak up, I think that would be, I think right now is the time. You know, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to disrespect you or anything, but you're a really nice guy. You know, and everybody's here nice. I have no personal issue with nobody, but I think there's- But I think there's sometimes, there's a line that we need to step down and say, throw the towel. And I think right now is a towel time, you know, in the throw it. Please, I highly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and, and just to give you a heads up, I will speak up in a little bit. And you will hear other side of the story. Because I was involved with all of this from the beginning. So I, I advise everyone to listen because that would be the most important part that you will hear. Thank you.
Yeah, no, another thing is just like, if there is a day that you guys want to get rid of him.
No, I know, no, we are, this, this meeting is not about that. This meeting is to make this investigation process fair and transparent and to bring justice.
And I think that's everybody deserves it as a citizen of Hamtramck, you know? And if there is a day, you know, let's set up, well, one day, not every week. Hey, we're trying to get this guy out or we're trying to get that person out, you know? And I highly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Abdul Muttaled?
My name?
Abdul Muttaled, Abdul Muttaled.
Abdul Muttaled?
How many more you have running?
I'm sorry?
How many more?
Probably twenty.
Uh, not that many, no, there's that card, uh, maybe like ten, ten or twelve.
Afternoon, uh, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm just here to say a few things about Max. He's been with us for almost, what, ten years now? Or he's probably longer than that. He was a police chief prior to that. This guy knows the city in and out. He's been serving our community very well. I mean, the last few years, all the work that's been getting done. He's been involved in everybody's businesses that's been opening up. And always, he's, he's always there for all the citizens of this, of this community. All the allegations that's coming up on him. I, I know like, okay, maybe he suspended the, uh, the police chief. If that's protocol, if that's procedure, based on whatever evidence he's got, that's what he had to do. But to have a meeting all of a sudden just to suspend him or to get rid of him, I don't know if that's the, basically, we're pointing fingers at each other. Trying to get this guy out and trying to get this guy back in. Let's just cut all this and just work together. I mean, City Council as well as the administration. We should work together to further this city. Not just, you know, pick and choose who we want to favor and who we want to get out of this thing. So I think we should all get together and just, you know, look for progress for the city. Not just point fingers. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gias Telefter? Gias?
Gias Telefter?
Gias.
I think the mic has it now. Can you hear?
No.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We have been here for almost last two hours. My name is Gias Taladra, I'm a businessman in Hamtramck. I was a former resident too here. What is happening here is dividing us over there. We want you to, like, you guys are the ruler of Hamtramck. You guys, we put you guys here, I've been to the residents of Hamtramck, put you guys here so that there's no chaos, there's no division that should go around. And Mr. Mayor, Mayor Khalid, he has been here, he's a very sweet guy that we know. He, you know, he have the judgment. Of course, he's a doctor, medical doctor. It takes a lot to be a doctor. So I'm, I'm sure he has this, how to clarify everything and to verify everything that's happening here. We don't want to be here for the tribe. We don't want to be divided. And loving your ethnic group, there's nothing wrong in it. But we don't want to fall for just for the ethnic group. We want to fall for everybody. You want to create a garden, there has to be all kinds of flowers in it, then only we call it a garden. If there's only one kind, that doesn't look beautiful. Secondly, the gentleman right here, we are hearing things about him. I don't know how much sure it is, like if they're trying to get rid of him or not. This is an asset to our city. Where, in which city will you find a CM, which is a city manager, that will reply to your messages, messages early in the morning, two AM, one o'clock? No matter what time it is, I don't know if he sleeps or not. You know, take some sleep, thanks. He replies, he trying to take care, solve your problem. And we don't want to get rid of such people from the city. If there's any shortcomings, we all have shortcomings. Nobody's perfect. If there is any, let's put it together on, on a table and take care of it and, and solve the problem. Don't give hard times to all the people that are here. We have almost like maybe ten full rows of people that are waiting in the hallway to speak here. Most of them are in favor of Max. And I'm not talking about Chief Taheri here because I don't know if there's, there is an allegation they're saying, but we all have allegations if we look about. But Taheri, as so far I know him, he's a nice guy. He's not cheap, but he is there to be chief, you know, he has that ability. At the same time, we want Max in our city of Hamtramck. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ken, is it, is it Kenneth Bark?
Yeah.
Come on, three minutes. Three minutes.
I'm in.
You got three minutes.
Three minutes, alright, thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council members. How are you? I'm not sure what's going on, but I saw it on the news yesterday. But I'm here in support of the chief himself. I've known the chief since he first got here, when you first hired him. And he has always been a community chief. I've never known him to be in the station. He's always out in the committee. When it came election time, never saw any of you guys in my neighborhood campaigning. So I don't know who you are. But when he was supporting certain one of you guys on City Council, and he had the election up at the, when we had the election up at the high school, he made sure that his neighbors, which I, he stays directly across from me. I remember when he started working on that house, when he first got here. Now, you guys called him all the way from New York just to be the chief of police for a year, something's wrong. This guy left his job that was sound and permanent to come here to the city of Hamtramck and be a police officer. As far as I know, the crime rate is down in Hamtramck. The patrols are up in Hamtramck. Because I remember time coming through Hamtramck, which I've been registered all my life. You couldn't even find a police car at night in the city of Hamtramck. Detroit you could find, but not Hamtramck. But he has increased that. Now we have more police officers patrolling the city of Hamtramck. That is Hamtramck. You used to have Wayne County Sheriff from twelve o'clock at night to seven o'clock in the morning, or whatever. But he is a good chief and whatever you got against him, I think the terms are very, very, very false. Some of you guys need to sit down and look at yourself. Because every politician is not right, not even you. Not even you, Mr. Mayor. Because he campaigned for you. So I'm gonna end mine short because I don't have, I don't need three minutes. But I am a total supporter of his. And he's been across the street from me ever since he arrived in the city of Hamtramck. He's a good police chief. And like I said, he never, I've never heard him being in his office. He's always patrolling the city day, afternoon, and night. So whatever this charge is, he's not making it public to the public, so it is what it is. Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Thank you. Al Madina Gozek?
Al Madina Gozek? Is Al Madina here?
No. Jual Mohammed? Do you have the announce that? Okay, Rizal Chowdhury?
Honorable Council, uh, it's very unfortunate, we are going on media and national attention. One incident after another. I personally think it was not necessary to call an emergency meeting today. The city has a meeting scheduled on Tuesday. We could discuss all matters together there. Uh, that, we are human beings, we can make mistakes. And we make mistakes, somebody has to make a judgment, investment, I'm sorry, uh, investigation. If that person get innocent after the investigation, we'll celebrate it, we'll honor it. If after investigation someone get proven guilty, they have to be punished. Here's the rule. So I would urge City Council to make very careful decision if you have to do today. Because the whole, not only Hamtramck, whole region is watching you. Your one wrong mistake could ruin your reputation. And city could be in, in bad, bad situation and sue and others. So please consider, if you have, if you need to take time, take more time, discuss yourself, discuss with the parties, and take the wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Hassan Al Harbi?
Shalbi. My name?
Al.
Shalbi.
Al Hassan Al Sharbi.
Al Hassan Al Sharbi? No.
No? Kabir Ahmed.
Shabir Ahmed?
Kabir.
Kabir.
Kabir?
Kabir.
Kabir, Kabir.
No response.
Okay. M D Islam?
M D Islam?
Salaam alaikum, how are you everyone? Hungry a long time after I am, I am in the City Council meeting, which is emergency meeting, yes, I am here. You know, the city of Hamtramck and other cities, they are always facing some hard time, some problems. But they are solving their problem, uh, you know, within their council and their administration. And I'm requesting all of you, the City Council, mayor, city manager, and clerk, everybody, please work together and resolve this issue, which is better for us. And don't, uh, uh, like, uh, put some pressure on the citizens of the city of Hamtramck. Because if you are, I don't know, but i- if you are make a wrong decision and city guard, and city will get any lawsuit, then we have to pay from our pocket. We have to pay from our pocket. This is the, uh, request to the City Council and the administration of the city of Hamtramck. The second thing is, uh, your fire department, they are going to the businesses once a year to, uh, like, uh, see how is going on and they are charging one hundred dollars. Okay, you could, you could charge one hundred dollars for the business, but remove, please remove one hundred dollars from the mosque or church, religious institution entity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nasser Kadeh?
Nasser Kadeh? He's coming.
Salaam alaikum.
Salaam.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I don't usually speak, but I guess today, I'd like to express our opinion about Chief Taheri, he's not here tonight, but he's a, he's a really good man, to my opinion. He's, uh, built bridges between the community and between the people and he's brought us to a level where nobody's brought us before. So, you know, I mean, we really appreciate him and we hope that we can resolve this problem. And plus Max, he's been with us for decades, twenty years and so, so, you know, we hope that we can fix this problem altogether. We, we want, we don't want nobody to leave. We want everybody. We finally got to the, to a spot in our community where things are going good. And now we're gonna bring him backwards. We don't want that. We want to go forward with everybody, with Max and with the chief. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahmed Sharaf, Detroit?
Salaam alaikum. Purposely Mayor, Samir, and our, uh, Prime Minister, I mean, uh, Bazer. I get so upset, frustrated. I'm gonna move it to Arabic. This is about America. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Ahmed Sharaf Al Din. Najutu qoogay. Ina taddat ali nafi. Saad taddat ha nashati li xamzajah sahna. Saad ala ron da. Anta sadiqal, nak sadiqay. Kla man xalfi astiqar. Dakna al haq, foka al kul. Wana. Samatu kulla al khamid. Kullu mbi taddat.
Can you tell them to calm down outside?
Sadat ala ron da. Al kul bi taddat su'ala mashaglum. Al kul taddat la mashaglum. Qudiyah xrajat. Wajib alayka anta tathil qarar. La ra'is al amriki danul trump. Vada fi ka thika. Kar qadid mktamay. And diplomatic person. Ida xrajta liyom ant. Mihim hamoud. Saadat al, al, attorney. Abu mousa. Anaa adrii kulu wa'ad bi ismu li anhu yom al din sa bedghona bi ismaku. Bi diyanatikum. Wkulu wa'ad gharfaj di bkalbu. Yom is yom al mashagl, mashagl sahna ron da. Anaya wishich shans like that. Yom yom al madaris. Yom al turukat. Samatayin wal madina ta'ani. Ala ayi qudiyat taddat. Man al ladhi bi khofna ina al madina. Atwaih qudiyah. Qudiyati ana. Inu ibni ma'andu madras al salaha. Qudiyati ana. Ashwara taddat tassla. Qudiyati ana. The city of Hamtramck near Habsburg. Aman nuwa hadi yitflemli ala. Sayid Max ala yamil al tahiri ala. Hana is yom al asma. Yom yom al qarar. Untum muthamili na hadar. Yom al qarar. Thank you. Please translate.
No, you have one more minute. It wasn't coming.
No, I'm just upset.
Okay, no problem.
Alright, alright. He's talking about, uh, he wants me to translate. So he's, he's talking about that we should, uh, put emotions aside and take the wise decision regarding this. And he's complaining about, you know, the priorities, that there are some priorities for the residents, including schools, um, roads, you know, street alleys, and he cares more about that and he needs to see improvement. He doesn't want, uh, discussing personal stuff and wasting our time with that. And so he is asking us to be decisive about this and to take the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jual Mohammed?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jual Mohammed. I moved to the city back in two thousand and one from New York and I love this city. So today I'm here to support Mr. Max Gabriano. He has been doing really great job. I'm gonna go a little bit, a little while back. Back in two thousand and eight, after the recession, this city, we had trash everywhere. Max Gabriano, Bill, was there Andrew, uh, John Oly, and many others, Anamya, many others that I don't remember the name right now, but, uh, they, they, uh, we had a team who cleaned up the city every weekend. So we don't have many good ones left. Try to keep the good ones, okay? And without the Max Gabriano, the, uh, the, uh, city, city clerk, you guys are not capable to do a lot of things. So keep it cool and keep the good ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Stephen Thiel? Is it Steven Thiel?
Thiel?
Steven Thiel, T H, from Rose Point Farms?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Steven Thiel from Rose Point Farms. I heard about today's proceedings on the news, and I do not fully understand the circumstances that has brought such a loud, large crowd here today. But I would like to take the opportunity to place my concerns about the Hamtramck Police Department on the record. A few years ago, I was arrested for a crime I did not commit, and spent two days in the lockup before being released. While in lockup, I received two bologna sandwiches each day totaling approximately four hundred calories. The Michigan Department of Corrections requires inmates receive an average of twenty-six hundred calories per day. Some inmates downstairs can spend up to four days in lockup, depending on which day they're arrested. Especially if it's a holiday like Memorial Weekend coming up. This is tantamount to cruel and unusual punishment, a violation of the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution. I immediately recognized this is wrong and illegal, and that a crime was and still is being committed by the Hamtramck Police Department. My intention was to petition the government to resolve this issue. I filed a Freedom of Information Act request, only to be told that no records exist regarding the origin of the bologna sandwiches, the purchase, or how they were acquired by the city of Hamtramck. I think this is concerning, especially that my attempt to resolve it only resulted in a dead end. So however this investigation plays out, I would ask that the council, the police department, and anyone else involved try to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Lachello Seifers? Lachello Seifers?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mr. Seifer?
Hey, how are you clerk?
Thank you. I'm welcome.
Hey, what's going on, city council? We know it must be something going on. We got a million people from out of, out of, out of this city all lined up and a million, uh, television trucks out there, we seen the police in the city up here, the city could be getting robbed right now, but listen. Um, I saw a picture out there, and I'm appalled of that picture. How could y'all put a picture in this building of Trump? So what I'm gonna do is, I'm offering to the people out there in TV world, I'm offering five hundred dollars. If they come up here and take that picture down, I am giving you five hundred dollars. If you want more, I'll give you more, but that picture needs to come down. Shame on you guys for putting that picture up there. Five hundred dollars right now to a person that come in here and take that picture off the wall and give it to me. I'm standing out right in front of city hall. Mostly everybody in Hamtramck know where to find me. I am very appalled of you guys to have that picture up there. Five hundred dollars right now to a person to come get that picture off that damn wall. Shame on you. Shame. That picture doesn't represent Ha- Hamtramck. That picture represents a part. We want someone hanging on that wall. You got some other Republicans up there, but they didn't do the things that he has done. Shame on you. You guys just wanted to take a picture with somebody that was popular and put it up on that wall with the rest of them presidents. Five hundred dollars right now to a person that come get that picture off that wall. Five hundred dollars. And everybody in Hamtramck know. Bye bye.
Thanks, Seifer. Take care. Let's just finish the panel. Rabia and? Rabia?
Hi, everybody. My name is Rabia, and I'm a resident of Hamtramck. I'm here to support the, uh, police chief, Yamil Al Taari. This is actually sad, that I can say, Hamtramck City, what you got to, and
It's okay, you can just hold it up.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry about that, um. It's sad to see us on the news like this. I think this should have been taken care of between mayor and city manager before the media and everybody else. I had encountered a couple of times with, uh, Max, uh, when I did calling, and it wasn't a good experience at all. So I think Max was the chief before, and he was the corrupt chief, so he needed to be taken down either way. And he should have been the manager at all. Yep. So before the media, I think you guys should have sit down and discuss it with mayor of the city before you guys brought everybody in. And I hope everybody sits down and make a decision, because this is really quite, um, sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe, is there anyone else who? That's it? Okay, that is all for, I know. That is all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Did, did you figure out those emails?
Oh, yes, thank you for the reminder. Um, it's just the one. It's from, okay, so I did get an email. The reason I, I skipped over it, because it didn't say that it was a public comment, it just said it was to the mayor and city manager. But, uh, it says, this is from Brooklyn Auto Mall to the mayor and city manager. I want to make a formal complaint against a Wayne County detective named David. He helped me pick up a car back that I legally bought from owner. She reported it stolen, and it was why her boyfriend who made payments. It was with her boyfriend who made payments. I also cleared issue with detectives with her in sixty-seventh precinct, and everything is legally done. David and previous owner have been in contact for some time based on what my friends and she had been reporting, making the conspiring against something or whatever, which I don't know why. I have all the legal documents, and the car in question is in my legal possession. Please clarify why David's name keeps coming up, and I'm confused. My attorney can follow up if you like. And they did attach a sale transaction, which, to me, I don't understand what it means, but it, it is attached. Uh, but that's the, that's the email.
Thank you.
No problem.
Well, I think with that, we come to the end of the public comment, and we'll start discussing the only, uh, issue in the new business, which is discussing the, uh, volatility within the city hall administration. Um, can I get a motion to start the discussion? I mean, it's not like, I, I don't think we need to vote, but
Yeah, we need a motion.
We need a motion, yeah.
I, I need to start the discussion. A second.
Alright, so, so thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate, uh, your time. Um, we actually, um, we are not here to punish anyone today. We just want to make sure that the investigation is fair and transparent. You have seen allegations sent from an anonymous person, right? Nobody knows who wrote those, including recordings of the chief and his. I'm, I'm saying this because the chief is not here to defend himself. But I know he, he sent me a lot of stuff, including what you just heard now. This is justification of one of the allegations of the stolen car. So, when that person come, the owner of the car, and talk about this and makes a false accusation, then things will look different. I was mentioned in one of those allegations regarding the election, a hundred percent false accusations. And for that reason, I wanna ask the FBI to include me in that investigation. His, his, his wife sent an email to deny that he is abusing her. That was another one of the accusations. So when you hear from the other side, you may change your mind. Now, Hamtramck will never be again a safe haven for criminals and leftovers of other cities to come here and cause incivility and, and, and toxic work environment here, and their eyes and their focuses are on our resources. The interest of the people of Hamtramck is their last priority. And that's what some officers came, and from day one, and that tells you why there's recording of the police from two thousand and twenty-four and stuff. That tells you what was the goal from the beginning of this. And one of the wives of this officer sued Hamtramck Public Schools for a million dollars. So, what is happening now is we are treating the police chief as a criminal until proven otherwise. Why, in fact, it should be innocent until proven otherwise. Now leaking this information allegation to the media and weaponizing the media against our community. I spent, the last meeting, we were so good with the attorney, and we agreed that we will go out for dinner. Max said, okay, you have a full autonomy of the police department, I'm not gonna get involved, do whatever you want with Dave. And we, we promised each other, we will go, uh, for dinner together, because everything is settled down. The next day, I heard from the news that the police chief was suspended. Why? Because anonymous person sent some allegations to Max. And I was involved in this thing from the beginning, at least as a respect, I should be informed what was happening. I heard from the news, he's suspended. What's happening? I thought we settled everything down. Oh, no, an anonymous person sent some allegations, and, and I had to act. What I'm telling you here, these allegations from the police chief complains from May twelve, and I was included in the emails against this officer, and Max was CC'd, serious allegations. And Max is included. Max is part of this. And that's why I'm saying that, that, the, the, the investigation has to be fair and transparent. I would ask Max at the end, and I, I don't want him to interrupt you, man, uh, right now, why didn't you act based on these allegations? He said, I sent you multiple times about insub- insubordination of this guy, he's not listening to me. He's doing investigation against elected officials without my knowledge, without my, without my order, without my, uh, he, he said, I don't know who's telling him to do that. These are serious allegations. Max didn't take any actions, May twelve, May fourteen, May fifteen, May nineteen. He sent me these emails after he tried so, because in the interview, we asked him a question. If there, if you are told to do something against the law, what would you do? By your boss, who's Max. He said, I'll talk to him first, try to resolve the issue. What if he doesn't listen to you? And he insists that you do stuff against the law. He said, in that case, I have to reach out to a higher authority to, to let them know. And that's what's happening here. This makes Max part of the investigation. And that's why I'm just asking for fair and transparent investigation. Why didn't you act in May twelve when he complained about this officer? And you act within minutes when you received the allegations from an anonymous person. That raises a question. I'm not asking that you should get in trouble, we are not here to punish you, but you're gonna be part of the investigation, because you are, you are not, uh, impartial in this. You are a one party, one side. And so, you should be investigated, and whatever applies to the police chief should apply to you and to the other officer. I am asking myself to get involved in the FBI investigation. Why? Because my name was mentioned in the allegations regarding the vote, the whatever fundraising and stuff, which is totally a hundred percent false. And that's why I want to testify. And that's why I didn't believe most of these allegations. Because once you read some of them, and you know it's false, then you know that something is going on. So, to ensure neutrality, impartiality of this investigation, a private investigation company is rejected a hundred percent. The guy is own, the guy owning private investigation company, and that's his business. That's what he does for life. And there's a possible conflict of interest, because Max, when he was fired in two thousand and fifteen, worked for this guy. And then he asked the police chief for a favor to bring him back. So, one of these allegations is frequent meeting between him and Max, and God knows what, why is he taking his order from Max and not from the police chief? A, a lot of stuff that needs to be investigated, include in the investigation. So FBI is fine. That would be transparent and fair. A private company is not accepted, Max. I ensured before I came that you are not gonna get in trouble today. I made sure that you will get, uh, just treatment, and everybody else. I'm, I'm volunteering myself to be part of the investigation, because I have a lot to say. We had meetings. I thought we solved the issue. I, I got you together with the police chief, I got, uh, uh, Khalil Rafai, Councilman Khalil Rafai with the police chief, and we thought, we solved everything. And then things I heard from the news, what's going on. Weaponizing the judiciary system and the media against our community is unacceptable. Hiring people of criminal backgrounds and leftovers from other cities for personal gains, that's what they come for. The interest of the community is their last priority, is not acceptable anymore. And if it doesn't get fixed now, it will never get fixed. And that's why I'm gonna ensure that this investigation will be fair and transparent. You don't treat a person as a criminal based on allegations from anonymous person. If that, uh, person, you said that he handed to you the same allegation, then he's responsible for the recording, which is illegal. That happened in two thousand and twenty-four, an argument between the police chief and his wife, she's denying everything here. So, you can't just believe whatever you hear. Things about our personal life, everybody has issues with his family and stuff, shouldn't be, uh, well, there was a, 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 a department head who got involved in an accident, and he was intoxicated with alcohol. Did you hear about that in the news? No. Why? Because he doesn't belong to, I'm gonna say it clearly, he's somebody that he likes. So he didn't want to leak those information to the media. If he was, if he belongs to a different community, I'm sure it would be in the media, and they will be all around here. But did you hear about it? No. Because he's, you know, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna mention no names, but this is the truth. We, we, this is gonna be included in every investigation. I made sure, and I talked to the people here, that you are not gonna get fired. We just want to ensure transparent investigation, fair investigation, justice should prevail. Did you hear the story of the, of the police chief? No, because he's not getting a chance to speak and defend himself. You only hear everything on the media from one side. You're not hearing from the other side. And that's why I'm speaking here, and I'm pissed off, because everybody's talking about hearing some anonymous allegations from a, a anonymous person, and everybody's believing that. If he's guilty after the investigation, fine, he should be held accountable, and should be, I'm not gonna defend him if, if he's guilty. But there are other side of the story, other people that needs to be investigated. This guy who caused incivil work environment is not being investigated. Yes, he's a, you know, leave, paid leave of absence, whatever it's called, but he's not being investigated for these allegations that happened two and three weeks ago. He should be investigated. FBI is gonna take care of this. I will be part of this investigation, because my name is mentioned in the allegations, and I have a lot to say. Max will be part of that, so that should be fair, I think. If the police chief, whatever applies to him is gonna apply to Max, I think. That should be fair. If the police chief should be, uh, away from the city hall, that should happen to Max and Dave as well. If, if Max wants, you know, to, to stay here, then the police chief should come back maybe, and, and in the days that the FBI comes, they both leave the city hall, and then that would be fair, so they don't impact the investigation. That's what I need, need to say, and I think that should be fair. I'm not gonna take, I, I advise, because I can't control the city council, I advise against firing Max, Max. But I advise that the investigation should be transparent and fair. I'm leaving the city. I could say, I don't care what's gonna happen. But I care about the city resources, because everybody, when they talk, they threaten us with a lawsuit, a lawsuit. Like there was no lawsuits in the past. We had one that lasted sixty years. We had so many lawsuits for stupid things in the past. You didn't hear in the news about them, because nobody used to leak them in the news. But now, there's intention, a bad intention, to make our community looks bad. And that's why every little thing leaks out in, in the, in the media. You know, investigation against elected official, that's fine, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be by a private investigation. It should be by the government, uh, by Attorney General, by whoever. Our city should not be involved, our department, especially without the knowledge of the police chief. How, how are you working without your boss, without telling your boss? You're going out to investigate people, because somebody else told you, who oversteps his power. I'm not allowed to talk to the police chief and tell him what to do, I have to go through Max. Same thing for those people. He is in full autonomy of the police department. And if there is insubordination like this, people refuse to listen to him, that's an issue. It should have been, uh, fixed. It should have been fixed when he complains about it three weeks ago. In fact, more because it mentioned here, I have talked to you multiple times. So that's why the FBI showed up today. That's good. We want the FBI to get involved. Because it would be fair and transparent. And if the police chief is guilty, he he should be held accountable. I don't I don't care. I'm not gonna defend him. But if somebody else also is guilty, same thing. Do you think this is fair? I'm not saying, you know, punish someone for doing something or retaliate. No. I'm just saying, everybody, we should take every allegation into consideration. And it should be investigated and everyone should should be involved in this. And whatever, you know, the result is, the person who's at fault should be held accountable. But your city, as as long as I'm here, will not accept it, accepting. Any more criminals with criminal backgrounds or leftovers from other cities to come and and just try to get our resources. Their eyes is only on lawsuits. They don't care about you. And everything they talk, they threaten us with lawsuits. That's not acceptable. This is not gonna happen. And there's so much stuff that I wanna say, not against anybody, but so we can get things fixed. And if it doesn't get fixed now, it will never get, never get fixed again. I'm telling you. And if this police chief, you know, mistreated. You you, I I don't think he will get one from your community for the next two decades. And I'm sure about that. But if he's guilty, I'm not gonna defend him. I'm just telling you. So that's what I have to say. If anybody else want to say something, that's fine. But we need to get to the closed session while Councilman Mahid Mahud is still here because he has to leave.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to that?
You can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few points here. First of all, the city did not leak out any of these allegations. The police chief was put on leave. Paid leave at that because there's suspected criminal activity that was alleged. The chief will have his opportunity, full opportunity, to actually speak to the investigators and give his side of the story. That has never been a question. I feel comfortable mentioning the emails that you brought up, now only because I consider it a resolved matter, actually. I did receive several emails from the police chief and I found them to be uncredible and untruthful.
Why didn't you order investigation? You were defensive about the police chief.
May I finish, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Because you yourself wanted to make the peace, so I let it go. I did, a hundred percent. The chief sent a whole series of emails that were inappropriate, unprofessional, and making wild claims that I knew personally.
To me, it makes so much sense.
Mayor, that that I that I knew personally were unfounded and untrue, but I let it go. So that those, and that's the only reason I'm speaking about it, because we're not looking at that right now. We can certainly bring it into this if you want, but that was a closed matter.
It was never resolved. I didn't talk about it in the meeting. We talked about you, your issue with the police chief, not this guy.
I'm I'm not trying to get back and forth with the mayor, but I I know as a fact a hundred percent that I brought up the issue of the police chief sending random emails.
It's not random. I mean, to me, it it's serious allegations. I'm sorry.
And we we a hundred percent can include those in there. I have nothing to hide from that.
Why didn't you include it when it was happened, when it happened? Why did you act within minutes when the other guys send you allegations?
Mayor, because I just stated that I considered that a resolved matter because I found them to be uncredible when I got them. They were not valid on their face. They were literally made up. With with that said.
That's the investigation will decide, not you. Because he he's saying same stuff about the allegation that they are made up stories, but we insisting to investigate that. So you can't just, you know, neglect them and say, no, they are, they make so much sense. You order investigations without his knowledge, using someone in the police department, which which is overstepping your power, violating the rules.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that is not true. That is absolutely, it may be in there, but it's not true. And if you'd like, I can discipline the police chief for sending that allegations, but I consider, I considered it a closed matter.
It doesn't matter. You should have investigated this. You can't judge yourself.
Mayor, I knew it to myself to be not factual. I knew it as not being factual and I can easily prove it to be unfactual. But we made the peace in the PD with you, so I let that go.
And then the next day I heard from the news you suspended him. You didn't let me know. At least you, as a respect, you have spent so much time for you, with you both, you should have informed me.
Significant crim, potentially criminal allegations. Everything in those emails is not criminal. That's just civil disturbance.
Yeah, no, it it's violation of the rules too. But anyways, anyways, I think I think you mentioned, you mentioned that it should be included in the investigation. And because you are one side of this matter, there are allegation against you. Uh, so you will be also part of the investigation.
May I finish, Mayor?
And and no private company will take care of this investigation. It will be the government, it will be the FBI. That's what I want and I think that's fair. If you are innocent or Officer Dave innocent, then you fine. You'll come victorious. We are not taking any action against you at this point. Same thing with the police chief. If he's innocent, that's fine. We're gonna celebrate all of us. If he's guilty, he's gonna be held accountable. I think that's the only fair way to move on with this from now. We're not punishing anyone. I I I advise against punishing anybody, but I think the investigation has to be fair and transparent. And all parties should be involved and we should not treat somebody as criminal based on allegations. It should be the opposite, innocent until proven otherwise. That's not what we are doing. We are causing a relationship. You never know. You don't just throw a name of a person and say, oh, he is in a. He has having affairs with some respected, highly respected, highly educated person that is mentioned in there. And causing risk for her and her family. And then you leak it to the news and to the public before you make sure is it true or not. These are serious stuff that will be addressed. Like I said, I'm volunteering to be part of this investigation because my name was mentioned in the allegation. So I will have to ask the the FBI to to ask me and and hear what I have to say. And and I think that's the only, the only entity that will accept to get involved or the state police. Private companies, no, there's conflict of interest. Uh, we can't, we can't do that because, you know, the other side is saying you worked in two thousand fifteen with this guy. Uh, there's, you know, we, the nature of your relationship with them will be investigated as well. Uh, so it it's, we are not gonna accept private company to investigate this. Especially after the, you know, the previous experience with that unprofessional. Company that came and gave us one minute report, didn't even know how to state his name. So that's not gonna happen again. Uh, that's, I think everybody is, I I don't think a wise person should disagree with what I'm saying. Everybody should be investigated and if proven innocent, that's it. That's that's.
Mr. Mayor, may I finish?
Go ahead.
I I didn't wanna cut you off, but I was, I wasn't done. So um, there are two issues at hand here. There's criminal allegations that are alleged, which as you stated, the federal agencies are involved in investigating. And then there's civil internal departmental allegations that come along with that. These are two separate distinct things. The Federal Bureau of Investigations is not going to come in here and sort through this mess. They are simply going to look at what the federal crimes are here. And then maybe in a year from now, they'll come back and say, oh, yes, we have this. That's how that works. They will not come in here and essentially sort out all the state charges in drama. The reason that I've secured an outside agency and that agency is actually AG Advisors Global, which is a very reputable company. It's a former FBI agent, retired FBI agent that runs this company and all his employees are former law enforcement. They've done large tasks such as the Flint water crisis and other things where they investigated for the AG's office. Um, they're respected, they have references. Um, I have no personal ties to them whatsoever. I can't speak.
I mean, you can say that, but nobody's gonna believe that. It's it's not, basically, it's not gonna be the company of your choice. We have to get involved. If it's a private company, we have to get involved and make a choice.
And Mayor, I I offered for you to meet with them today.
No, I I don't wanna meet with them. It came through you and you are part of the investigation. You are one side. They accuse you of being an opponent. And and there's, there's a, there is a proverb in Arabic that said, if you are the opponent, how could be, how could you be the judge? You know, if you are the opponent, you can't be the judge. And and you are making decision, but you are part of this.
Mayor, very often when people are in the hot seat, they cast dispersions to get themselves out of it. And I'm not saying that the chief is guilty or gonna be be responsible for any of this. But I'm telling you that as his boss and the city manager, there is a right way to handle this and a wrong way to handle this. So I just literally explained to you with those emails that you sent that were invalid on their face. But I opted not to punish, but I opted not to punish the chief of police for those, and I found those untruthful. I did. And I have, I can absolutely prove that.
I mean, in the meeting, in the meeting, he told you in front of the attorney. What if the fire chief comes and he has one of his firefighters with you all the time in your office, wouldn't you get mad? You didn't deny that, that you meet with the guy regularly without the knowledge of the police chief.
Mayor, I specifically, I specifically said that I walk through city hall all the time and check on the employees throughout and talk to people. I have known this city for over twenty years. I know everybody here. It's good management to walk through city hall, take a turn through the police department and be sociable with our employees, a hundred percent.
What about that investigation?
What what do you mean about the investigation?
Against the elected officials without his knowledge.
It was, Mayor, Mayor, I will tell you unequivocally as a fact, and I have absolute witnesses to that, the chief was aware of that.
He he mentioned this in May twelve.
I know what he mentioned and it's a blatant lie and I can prove that.
Okay, that, who will decide that? The investigator?
Mayor, so sometimes, sometimes bosses have to intervene with their subordinates and subordinates lash out. That's just like if you fire an employee, they automatically sue you or sue the the company or the city you work for. That's how it works.
Okay, instead of going back and forth with this argument, we, all we are asking for is that all these allegations from this guy. Needs to be included in the investigation. Everything you are doing is from one side. Everything in the media is from one side. We are not hearing, this person, maybe if he's here, he would have a lot to say.
Chief will have an opportunity to say everything he wants.
Okay, we agree on that. That's it. Uh, the the company, if we go with a private company, we will make a choice.
I have two more points. Any allegations against the officer will also be investigated fully. Anything the chief has to say, a hundred percent will be investigated. Full transparency with this, Mayor. You are welcome to be part of every part of it, but there has to be two distinct things. There has to be a criminal thing, which the FBI isn't gonna tell us anything about. And then there has to be an internal thing from an outside respected agency, which we've already secured.
Now, I, this is the only thing we are, we disagree with. A third party should be our choice, all of us, not yours.
What if I get, came up with a list of ten? Send my breakdown to everybody?
We'll do our research. We'll do our research with you and agree on one.
Mr. Chief?
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, good evening. We came here today to solve the problem, not make the problem.
I'm so sorry. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but can I announce that there is no quorum at this moment?
We can discuss. We cannot take that decision.
I know, so just to, just to announce, there is no quorum, so no motion.
So I can discuss, but I cannot take any decision. So we came here to solve the problem. Relation between the city manager and elected official and the department head is very important. To move forward the Hamtramck City. And, uh, yes, we do have some disagree, agree, disagree. I still will be adding sixteen years council member here. And some of the residents I saw today came here reading all those stuff against the council members. Uh, they think they are the one who says everything in the world and who's sitting here, they are nobody. But they have to understand that somebody sitting here, some of them have more knowledge, more degree. More work experience. He can laugh all along. I never saw you in town. And I don't know what you, you have to read all along what you're reading, somebody, if you return and reading, not us. We can speak everything clearly, okay? So again, uh, no division. So we'll go into the closed session. We'll come out from the closed session with a good decision. It not gonna harm Hamtramck City, not gonna harm anybody. And we'll find out the way. Remember that. Maybe you don't know even definition of the democracy. Government of the people, by the people, for the people, okay? So a lot of you don't know, uh, just one legend. So we are for the people. We will, we will make the decision, make sure there is not lawsuit against the city. And I saw the two, three lawsuit, city loss. We we lose. We have to make the settlement, okay? So we we know what we're gonna do tonight. Make sure all the taxpayer money is not going the wrong way. And again, just one legend, everybody, we are gonna go closed session, we'll come back. And we will have a hopefully good decision to make everything clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Prince Ammar. Anybody wants to, uh, bother to discuss?
I don't know if we could do a closed session exactly per se now that we don't have a quorum. Although it wouldn't necessarily be an open meeting acts violation to meet.
If not correct?
Because we don't have a quorum. So it's technically not a closed session, but we could still be.
So that case, Mr. Mayor?
So you'd have to end the meeting, but we could meet.
I I think, I think we should, because there are, you know, the suggested solutions needs to be discussed as well. I mean, yes, there would be no vote, but we have to, uh.
Right, it's just technical. I mean, we'd have to end the meeting rather than break to a closed session type of thing. But we could get everybody to leave and stay and talk. That, I think that would be okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That case, yeah, we have to respect the legal. Uh, that case from us, on behalf of us EU, as a mayor and attorney. And the city manager can have a, go sit and close down, we will finish up the meeting. And you guys discuss and let us know as our representative. I don't know, is good idea or bad idea, I think what is the.
Do you wanna talk, Councilor?
Yeah, um, good evening. Thank you for coming and joining us. Uh, it's very unfortunate for everybody. Friday, four o'clock, we start the meeting after four, late after four. And so many people around, uh, people knows, our resident knows, it is a serious issue. This is the reason you leave your, uh, some important stuff, important work to do, to join with us, to share your opinion. My question is there, uh, I'm discussing more than a decade. I know Mexico, you know, long time, good friend of mine. I know Police Chief Jamal Athari last maybe year. But I'm very much agree with Mayor. I have to let, let everybody's same opportunity and fair. Fair investigation to bring the truth. I'm not defending anybody else. I'm not against. Uh, our good friend, city manager, Mexico, we know, or our police chief. I'm not supporting him or defending him. I'm here to bring the reality, bring the actual things, facts, the proper investigation. And a couple things, Mayor, say about those things, I don't wanna spend your time. I'm very much agree with Mayor. Thank you very much to listening me.
Thank you. All right, so I guess we can, uh, discuss in a private meeting, even if there is no quorum. Just to put some ideas. I don't know where the attorney, where did he go?
We can't, we can't even vote to go into adjournment. We just really have to end the meeting after it ends. There's no quorum, we just end the meeting. Because you can't even vote to adjourn at this point. You just end the meeting. So I'm putting it down that the meeting officially ended when we left at six P M. So if you want to have everybody exit and we can go into discussion mode, not closed session. Because you have to vote to go into closed session. Uh, so if you want to let the audience know that we're done. No, I'm sorry.
No, uh, uh, do we, uh, yeah, no quorum. So, uh, well, thank you, everyone. Um, thanks for the time. We, uh. I hope you will hear some good stuff and we will maintain the stability of the city hall.
Hi, sorry, I'm just going to ask you a quick question. Because there's no quorum, will there be any vote on anything tonight then?
Not at all today.
So no official decision?